Good evening, everyone.
We can get it.
Good evening, everyone. The meeting was already called to order at 5:45. We are in executive session, and now this is the public session of the Board of Education Monday, June 21, 2021. We're going to take things a little bit out of order and just start with the retirement recognition. And I want to introduce Melissa Samansky and Maureen Carraballo to begin the recognition of Dr. Valerie Henning-Piedmont.
For Dr. Valerie Henning-Piedmont, in honor of your upcoming graduation, letters of gratitude. Dear Valerie, I'm writing this letter to you to express my sincere gratitude for your remarkable leadership as superintendent of schools. Very few leaders can attest to leading a school district through a global pandemic while concurrently maintaining and promoting a vision squarely focused on all children. Through your dedication, countless hours of hard work, and professionalism, the district has made great strides, including maximizing continuous instruction and ensuring as much in-person learning for children as possible. In my role, I have had the opportunity to work closely alongside you. I would like to take a few moments to publicly highlight some of your many accomplishments in direct support of children since you arrived in Hastings in celebration of the tremendous difference you have made in a short period of time. You've created a number of communication forums, meetings with the PTSA/INSEPTA, superintendent's chats, weekly updates, the Hastings Daily, building faculty meetings, board-student liaison meetings. You've introduced panorama surveys to better understand the Hastings climate and social-emotional needs of students. You've pushed the system forward in diversity, equity, and inclusion, for example, creating a time-to-talk-about-social-justice-and-racism forum. You've introduced meeting structures, weekly contact with the buildings, monthly meetings with the directors and the bargaining units. You've sparked the introduction of inclusive schooling in Project Lead the Way, strengthened alignment between buildings around the MTSS multi-tiered systems of supports process. You've established and fostered community partnerships with Hastings Historical Society, the Youth Center, Peacock, Police Department, and many other government agencies. You have elevated student voice through surveys, research, and presentations. You've moved the budget and the bond forward with Maureen's partnership. You've moved curriculum, instruction, and assessment forward with my partnership. All this and much, much more while promoting an aspirational vision in the midst of a global crisis. You have taught me to see the moving parts of the system from a district perspective, pushed me to communicate in a way that answers questions in advance and affirm the need to center students in every single decision. We have no doubt that in your retirement, you will continue to dream big and engage as a trailblazer. I am thankful for your support and mentorship these past two years. Thank you for everything, and best wishes in your retirement.
Valerie, first and foremost, I want to start off by congratulating you on an amazing career as an educator. But as I always say to you, Valerie, when you talk about your retirement, although you are moving on from this chapter of your career, I know that you're just beginning a new one, and the sky's the limit. You have so much to offer and so much energy to do so. I honestly have to say that I have never met anyone in my life who has the amount of energy and passion you do for public education. And I'm super excited to see what that'll take you to next. When I reflect on the last two years working with you, I have to say it has truly been an honor to work for you and with you. After working in the district for over 20 years, I feel like I have learned so much from you in such a short two years that we have been working together. Some of the things that stand out to me are, although, as Melissa shared, there are so many, and I could be up here for hours talking about them, but some things that I think will help me understand, you know, the time to slow down and meet with folks was creating more opportunities to communicate with our stakeholders, both internally and community-based. You've taught me that the importance of making time for people to be heard so that we can make sure we are listening when we're making our recommendations. Introduction of the administrative comment portion at the board meeting, as well as having me provide capital updates and financial updates. And by creating this space, it really helped me think about the important things that we should be highlighting at each board meeting to ensure that we're informing the public of what we're working on. It also helped me reflect on what we do and helped us to continue to improve communication district-wide. You've helped me expand the idea about the Budget 101 series to not only include just the financial data, but to really look at what is our vision for students in the upcoming five years and how that should help us focus our decisions when creating sustainable budgets over a five-year process. Also thinking about how our students will need to enter the workforce, which is also pushed just from our numbers, but to think really about the students' needs. These are just a few of the many things that you have done to help me grow. I know how deeply you care about students, and honestly, I love seeing your joy when you're around them. You always led with your heart and are a champion for children. I will miss your quick wit, your laugh, and your amazing leadership. Thank you for leading us through the pandemic and for all your support. I know this isn't goodbye, and I look forward to hearing about the next chapter.
Melissa and I chose a book to read to you today, so I'm going to start off. The book is called "I Wish You More." I wish you more ups than downs. I wish you more give than take. I wish you more to-be-toes than deep. I wish you more we than may. I wish you more hugs than ugs. I wish you more woo-hoo than wow. I wish you more will than he'll. I wish you more can than not. I wish you more snowflakes than tongue. I wish you more pause than fast-forward. I wish you more umbrella than rain. I wish you more bubbles than bath. I wish you more treasures than pockets. I wish you more stories than stars. We wish all of this for you and more. And there are some wishes that we would like to share on behalf of each of the buildings and departments. So from Hastings High School, the wishes are no longer having to act on changing mandates and sleeping in. From Farragut Middle School, beautiful weather along with a green thumb for gardening, great pinochle partners, and visits to museums on your travels. From Hillside, book clubs for sheer joy, an array of travel opportunities without restrictions, true lunch breaks with time to enjoy a meal with good company. From the district-level departments, dear Valerie, on behalf of the athletic department, student athletes, and coaching staff, we would like to wish you all the best in your retirement. We want to thank you for always being supportive and one of our biggest fans. The pandemic could have shut down athletics for us, but with your help, leadership, and support, we were able to participate in something that means so much to us and accomplish great things. We thank you for that. We all truly appreciate everything you have done for us. Although you will be missed, we are happy for you. You deserve a relaxing, rewarding next stage in your life. Best wishes from all of us for anything and everything you and your family choose to do. You will not be forgotten. Drew Wendell and the entire athletic community. From special education, dear Valerie, on behalf of the special education office, we want to wish you peace, success, and the continued opportunity to make a difference in the lives of children. Dear Valerie, the school counseling department wishes you all the best in your retirement and in your future travels. From facilities, dear Valerie, I hope retirement brings you the opportunity to fill your time with everything you enjoy, wishing you all the best life has to offer. Dream big. There's nothing you can't do. And now some remarks from Lauren Berman, board president.
Sure. Thank you, Melissa. From my experience in other schools as a teacher and as an administrator, I've seen that it can be a common pitfall for many professionals involved in schooling and education to lose sight of the very significant point that we are creating institutions for children made of relationships that shape our children. It was my impression from the outset of meeting Dr. Henning-Piedmont that she genuinely does not lose sight of that central fact, and it is actually the lens to her inspirational approach of leadership and her thoughtful perspective on decision-making. Dr. Henning-Piedmont has more than 30 years of experience in public education, with tenured positions as a humanities teacher in New York City, assistant principal in White Plains, director of instruction and professional development in Clarkstown, assistant superintendent of instruction and professional development in Clarkstown, assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment in Brewster, and deputy superintendent also in Brewster. She began her career in education in 1988 as a reading teacher at Decker Heights Intermediate School, and was most recently the superintendent of schools in Brewster, beginning in 2016, until she came to our district in 2019. This evening, we recognize Valerie in her retirement and thank her for her service to the Hastings School District, our students and families, our administration, faculty and staff, and to our community. I would like to particularly recognize Valerie for her three key aspects of her leadership while as our superintendent of schools. Together with the board, Valerie determined in 2019 that to build stability, the district needed to work on defining roles, processes, procedures, and practices to ensure that the system operates coherently. One very concrete way Valerie has achieved this is her leadership of our policy audit that was completed in partnership with legal counsel, NISBA, and the policy committee, while dry-sounding as a public institution updating and uniformly reviewing all policies is a central aspect of all the work that is done on behalf of our students. In addition, with Valerie's leadership, the district began conversations necessary to understand the continuum of teaching and learning K-12 for all students. The meetings and committees she helped foster will be the foundation from which the district can start to build cohesion, continue to identify the needs of all students, and drive toward the creation of aspirational goals and vision for the district. Valerie has done this by supporting the work of our assistant superintendent and the deep work of our chair counsel, content committees, and the creation of the teaching and learning synopses that have been written K-12. Last and certainly not least of all, Dr. Henning-Piedmont should be recognized for leading the Hastings School District through the COVID-19 pandemic. If ever I am lost at sea, in the dark, during a hurricane, with the winds shifting, in a ship whose design is designed to adapt to a storm, with more than 1,600 young souls and more than 200 adult souls holding on for their lives, with the compass spinning, I would want Valerie at the helm. As board president this year, I never once feared Valerie wasn't responding to state directives and simultaneously preparing for multiple operations. I trusted her because she was constantly connected to the state agencies and regional colleagues that were trying to keep our community as safe from the virus as possible and trying to uphold our commitment to educating children. She was always thinking of our community's children. We spoke at least weekly, and during the height of the pandemic, a lot more than that. And I would enter each meeting with so much of our community's fear and so much of my own anxiety. And as soon as I would hear Valerie talk of our operations, our progress, our safety, our children's learning, I was at ease. The work required 24-hour vigilance, focus, and dedication, and Valerie kept us afloat and moving forward. For as much as it was difficult surviving this time in history in our community in Hastings, it would not have happened without Dr. Henning-Piedmont. We honor Dr. Henning-Piedmont's service to children's education across her 30-plus years and in many area communities, and congratulate her on her retirement. On behalf of the Hastings-on-Hudson Board of Education, thank you. Valerie, we wish you well, and your valuable work here will continue to serve us all. Congratulations on your deserved retirement.
Thank you.
So we will move on to the educators. Are we marking the educators? No, we're going to pause and return to the remainder of the retirement recognition including educators, teachers, aides, and custodians. And at this point, we're going to recognize Board of Education members who are finishing their service at the end of this school year.
I'd like to recognize and thank Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins for being here this evening, very busy. She's going to recognize our three Board of Education trustees who are ending their term this year. And so as she reads your name, if you could kindly come down and stay there because we have a few other things for you.
Well, first of all, I really feel that I was absolutely blindsided. I had no idea you were retiring. Where did you go? It has just been, you know, they said awesome, my opportunity to serve Hastings and to really be part of this community in so many ways. I remember being here when I first ran for Senate, and one of your very enterprising young people, I lost by 18 votes. And he decided to have me, I remember I was on this stage, just talk to the young people about what that felt like. And he was so interested in my thoughts and what I was going to do and really encouraging the next stage of community involvement, not only for me, but for his peers. And I'm sure now he's probably a young lawyer or a producer or whatever. But I've always been so impressed by Hastings. And I will say that when I met you, I think we were together at the Thanksgiving dinner.
We were.
That the community again hosts for the homeless. And I remember that was the first time I met you. And I was just so excited, and we promised that we would actually have a moment to, you know, sit down and talk about education and so on and so forth. And then everything happened. COVID happened. The world sort of changed so extraordinarily. But I am happy to know that with your leadership, your tremendous leadership, you were able to steer this great school district through all of the uncertainties. And I am sorry I don't have a proclamation for you, but I guess this is who she is because they called the offices and get the proclamation for the trustees without mentioning that you were going to start another chapter in your life. So I wish you the very, very best, and I thank you so much for all that you've contributed throughout the years to our educational system and to the future of our children. So thank you.
Thank you.
Who knows, one day, maybe we'll actually have a chance to have that meal. So to the business at hand, please, may I see Jody Meyer? Jody, we have a proclamation for you. So, Jody, this is your day, and you are going to share it with your other colleagues who are leaving. So if Lauren Berman will come down. And Jeremy Arnon. I am in awe of all of you, and you especially. I guess you've been part of this Board of Ed for such a long time. You've everything from the vice president to the liaison. It has been, I know, tireless work. And I can't imagine this is easy. But after the COVID experience, I'm sure that it's something that you... But I wanted to say on behalf of the New York State Senate that this is indeed your day. In fact, the last, and this is for all of the honorees, says I State Senate, Senator and Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins recognized the significant contributions and accomplishments of Jody Meyer. And we'll join with the residents of the 35th District to proclaim this day, June 21, 2021, as Jody Meyer Day. So Jody, thank you. You know, I, these are, I'm a teacher, yeah, I think I'll always be a teacher, but I was in a classroom for a while. But school board trustees, members, you are my heroes because you don't get anything to do this. And what you do get is... Yeah, you all can, I know you've got a word that I didn't say, but it's... So for Lauren, this too, you've served many committees, policy, facilities, finance, community leaders group. It's just amazing what you've done. And you, unlike Jody, didn't even spend that much time, and they got you to do everything really fast. So I want to, and I didn't read all of it because, you know, I would, I would, there's a lot of other things happening. But I just want you to know that you will be sharing this day. The same thing goes for you. It is your day in New York State. Congratulations, Lauren. It is so nice to see the recognition and the genuine feeling that people have for the work that you've done. Again, this has been an incredibly difficult time. And to think that you'd be called upon not only to do this free service, but to do it with all the passion and compassion and intelligence that you have, but then to have to do it in the midst of this pandemic and guide this ship. So we are all very, very, you know, obviously proud of what you've done. We know this has come to an end. And Jeremy, you too, liaison for Hillside Elementary School, and you have worked with fellow board colleagues too. And this is the big one, to pass this $18 million casing. All of you did that. We know that sometimes communities are not thrilled to know that they have to go in their pockets to improve the schools. And then there's the issues of, well, do I have kids anymore? There's all kinds of things. So it takes real leadership, and it takes communication with the community, and it takes a steadfast belief in what you can do if you only work together to get a big bond like that done. So congratulations. Your legacy will be built, all of you. And Jeremy, it is your day in New York State as well.
Before you rush to leave the stage, I want to present you with some certificates. These are coming to you from Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association. Dr. Jody Meyer. One last thing you have to carry before you leave, and I'm going to read this to you, so bear with me as I read it against the light. Presented to Lauren Berman, Board of Education trustee, in recognition of your service, commitment, and dedication to our children, families, faculty, and staff for your service from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, on behalf of the Hastings-on-Hudson Union School Free District Board of Education Superintendent. I'm going to make you listen to it three times. Presented to Dr. Jody Meyer, Board of Education trustee, in recognition of your service, commitment, and dedication to our children, families, faculty, and staff, July 1, 2008, to June 30, 2021, Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District and the Board of Education Superintendent of Schools. Last, but certainly not least, presented to Jeremy Arnon, Board of Education trustee, in recognition of your service, commitment, and dedication to our children, families, faculty, and staff, July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, Hastings-on-Hudson Union Free School District and the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools.
That's a lot of trophies.
Yeah.
You might want to leave.
She might.
I've thought about this moment for a long time, and there are so many things that I would like to say, and I'm sure most of them will fly out of my head. This is, for me, an incredibly bittersweet time. I, I can't imagine not being on the Board. I feel like this has been so much a part of my life for so long. I know for my family, it is more sweet than bittersweet. I think they're happy, and they'll be teasing me, certainly during COVID, they got their fill of my saying, "I have a Board meeting tonight, I have a Board meeting tonight," when they really lived it. But it is really a sad time. I could never decide before not to run for the Board, and I think my kids were blown away when I said to them, "Really, I'm really not running again." But I do want to say a few words about having been on the Board for 13 years. When I, when I first ran for the Board, my youngest son, who was soon turning 30, was 18. He was entering his senior year in high school, and, and that seems like a very long time ago. So much has happened in that time. And I guess what I'd like to communicate here are just a couple of things about this district, which is such a very special place to be, and it made it so easy to be on the Board through good times in rec, through difficult times, and more easy and even fun times. But we all know the "it takes a village" idea, and we also know that Hastings truly, truly is a village, and our school district is a village. It is a place to bring your children, raise your children, educate your children. And like every other place in life, it is, it's not always pretty, it's not always easy. There are bumps on the road for everybody, for kids, for parents, for teachers, for administrators. But the thing that, for me, about Hastings, it is such a place of people coming together to work together for the interest of children, and I think that's what people say in most school districts. But I've seen it here now for 13 years, close up, and this district has an incredibly dedicated group of teachers, of administrators, of Board members, of staff members, of custodial staff, people who, who work beyond what people should work, given what people are paid to do, all for the best interest of kids. And I, you know, I thought about, did I want to mention particular people? And then I knew I would leave people out, but I don't think I could let this evening go by without just mentioning a couple of names of people who've kind of been there with me through it all. Maureen, we've been through a lot together. Lou, you came on just at about the same time I did, and we've been through a lot together. Fee, you're always there in the background, and people don't even know the extent to which you're here and to which you make this district run. I do, and I really appreciate it. George, you were here from the beginning of basketball, right? I mean, you were the one who was there on Saturday morning to open up the gym. And I also, even though he's newer, I have to mention Joe, who's here in the audience, who has been an incredible mainstay to this district, to making happen the things that we do when we pass bonds. Like, look at this auditorium. Jeremy Gallant, you were a student here, you know what this used to look like, and it's really different. And that was one of my greatest pleasures, was passing the bond that did this auditorium and that refurbished, to say it lightly, Reynolds Field. To this day, as I drive down towards Reynolds Field, I feel like if I did anything for Hastings, it was Reynolds Field, next to rec basketball, I guess. But, and that was a turf, those were the turf wars that we went through. That was, those were the turf wars, and we didn't get the turf, but we got the field. And I think we all know that we ended up in a really good place, so I'll try to move us along. I have worked with some incredible boards, and I've worked with some very difficult boards. I've worked with a lot of superintendents who have all given what they could to the district. I do want to say that I know what it's like to be a part of a Board that works well together. I did that for many years, and I've done that again, I have to say, with this Board. I'm very proud to have been a part of this Board who has worked tirelessly and collegially in the, over COVID and during the past several months. I have been incredibly impressed with this Board. And as a parent, I want to say to parents that it's not easy. It's not easy having your kids go through 12 years here, but it's a wonderful place to go through 12 years. It's never perfect. I was thinking about sort of teachers that my kids have had, experiences that they've had, and my kids both had basically pretty wonderful experiences, I think, but they had their bumps in the road. And I have to tell you all to keep this in mind, that one of my sons had a teacher who was probably one of the only teachers I can remember that was ever gotten rid of? I don't know what the right word is. After having tenure. So you could imagine that that was probably not a great teacher to have had, and yet he did fine, and he's fine, and he's thriving in his life. And just because of that one teacher, that one difficult year, or the time we think, oh, if I could, if I could only have Mr. Tuber for my teacher, everything would be great. And then you get Mr. Tuber, and Mr. Tuber's having a hard time in his life, and he's not the great teacher. So you've got to learn to roll with it, is one thing I want to say to parents. It all works out in the end. It really, really does, because of the people who are here who really care. And so finally, what I'll say is about the Board. It's very hard to leave all of you, and I feel like I want to say I'm still here, but I know there's nothing I'll be able to do. In some ways, maybe I won't write you lots of letters, I promise. You got my promise. I won't start letter-writing campaigns, I promise. And I, what I'd like to say to the new Board members is that you are joining a group of four Board members who are an incredible foundation for what you're going to be needing to accomplish. And I urge you to, what I really urge you to do is drop your conceptions, your preconceptions and your misconceptions at the door. Forget about it. Give it up. Come in, listen, and learn, because there is so much for you to be learning and hearing that you don't even realize, even in terms of things that we're going to vote on tonight. You just don't always know the whole story when you think you do. And the most important thing that you can do as a Board member is take your time and learn what it means to be a Board member. Learn what you do when people write you individual emails. Learn what you do when you go to the farmer's market and someone says, "Alex, what do you think about the fact that they're running?" And how do you answer those questions? Because you know what? Unlike Andrea Stewart-Cousins, when you're a Board member, you're not elected to Congress, you're not elected to the State Assembly, you don't have a constituency. You are here for the district. You're not here just for the people who elected you, you're not here for your own children. You're here to do what's best for the schools and what's best for the district. And so I just urge you that the best thing that the new people coming on Board can do is take your time to learn what your role is as a Board member. Take your guidance from these four people. Take your guidance from our new interim superintendent, who's had a lot of experience, and everything will fall into place. So with that, I will just say that I'm not going anywhere. Steve and I will be back for another round of rec basketball. It has been an absolute, it has been an honor and a privilege to be here for 13 years, and I thank you, and I love you all.
Thank you, Jody. I didn't know this was happening, so I had prepared to say something at the end of the Board meeting, but this, what I had to say is timely for this moment. So, and I wish I could speak off the cuff, but everyone, I think, knows it's not really my style. I plan things in advance. I want to thank the community for the privilege of serving the Board of Education. I want to thank my Board colleagues, those present, and those who served with me in 2018 and 19 for their commitment to the district and our students. A special mountain of thanks goes to Vice President Sylvia Robles, whose calm and humor and willingness to be involved as needed certainly deserves attention. I want to thank Valerie and Melissa and Maureen for your collaboration, your determination, and the ways you make growth and achievement possible for all of our students. Thank you, Melissa De La Barrera and Fee Goodman, for your administrative support of the Board. I need to thank my husband Keith for supporting me in all ways possible, my children for understanding my commitment, my in-laws and brother-in-law for hours of childcare, and the corral of additional babysitters that made my work on the Board possible. I would like to encourage new Board members to spend as much time looking inward as outward. This is a key mode of operation that I learned as a Board member during the pandemic. Look inward to build cohesion of goals that serve all of Hastings students and provide some readiness to build district-wide aspirations and vision. And look outward to see not only what other districts are doing well, but how, and to see other aspects of government and community that can assist in our goals. And most of all, I want to encourage the new Board to listen to students. Listen to the data of their achievement and growth. Listen to the fact that they are more comfortable with pronouns and situations and people that are not binary. Listen to their interest to be not only tolerated but celebrated for their differences, their skin colors, family constellations, languages, abilities, genders, and histories. Listen to students who won't or can't speak up, because teachers and administrators have unions, parents have each other, and ultimately, the Board's effort will fulfill its purpose when we make reasoned decisions on behalf of our students. I originally sought a seat on the Board of Education because the system was not serving my own student well. As an educator, I knew that leadership that is inclusive of all students would have implications to reach my own. And without having to advocate for the specifics of our own child's needs, I am pleased to say that the kindergarten experience my one child had in 2014 was not replicated in my other child's this year in 2020. The experience had greatly improved, even with the challenges of the pandemic. Our system has difficulty retaining leadership, and that inability, instability, excuse me, forces most parents to hunker down and just focus on what each of our own children need at school. That in turn forces the system to avoid progress. It forces us to avoid the kinds of change that impact more than our own student. Each parent is so worried about their own student that it forces us to avoid creating a collective vision, a plan, a pathway, that all students and families are walking on together. So instead, we sometimes have unlevel paths that can benefit the loudest, most threatening, or most connected among us. We sometimes have a system of placating adults in place of serving students. With stable leadership and the foundation to build a district vision, we can make a pathway for all children. I am hopeful that my time and work here has gotten Hastings a little closer to building a vision for learning and collective aspirations for all students. Of a lot of what I imagined, I would do, was put aside to help us progress as safely as possible through the pandemic. Despite the enormity of stress in this unruly year, it was truly my pleasure to serve on the Board of Education, and I'm grateful to have had the trust by the community to do so.
I'm not going to speak very long, because I want to get back to all the retirees, and I just want to thank Valerie. This is over the top, appreciative. Thank you so much to Senator Stewart-Cousins. You're right, this, this does say a lot about the type of person that Valerie is, and I really appreciate it. If we keep doing things like this, no one's ever going to run for the Board again, so I appreciate it. But, you know, I've only been on the Board for one term, but I'm really proud of what we accomplished. We, we got the bond, we did a lot of great things, and during COVID, you know, I always say I can write a book about, about the stuff that we did. I really, I want to thank the Board members, especially Doug, who wrote me into this years ago, and I don't think he'll ever be able to pull himself out, but really appreciative of, you know, everyone's support, and, you know, let's, let's get back to all the great retirees.
Thank you, Senator, for coming. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
So now we will resume the retirement recognition. If Luke Educiatro could please join the podium. Thank you.
And Ms. Walker is going to transition and tell us the process, because we're going to embarrass the retirees by having you do like a mister or Miss America.
Yes, I'm Lynn Walker. Good evening. I want to just take this opportunity to recognize our 2021 staff retirees for their commitment to the students of the Hastings-on-Hudson School District, and amongst them, they have many years of experiences, and we really appreciate and will miss them. Our hope for our retirees is that they'll all enjoy a long and healthy retirement, basked in the glow of knowing that they were loved and appreciated for so many years. Though not all of our retirees are in attendance tonight, but I want to list their names. There are David Felberbaum, Stephanie Hammond, Sandy Lutzker, and Juan Villamar. So in absentia, we wish you all the best. But we are happy to have here Naomi Gilbert, and we'd like to ask Louis Educiatro to come and say a few words.
Ms. Gilbert, you will have to go over there.
Yes.
While Ms. Gilbert's coming up, I do want to thank Dr. Henny Piedmont for her two years of service here, and wish her well on her retirement. I'm jealous, quite frankly, but on behalf of...
We talk about that a lot, Lou, right?
Yeah, I'm almost there, Valerie. I'm almost there. On behalf of myself, of course, but on behalf of the administrators, we wish you well in retirement, and please stay in touch. As far as the Board members are concerned, we know sometimes it's a thankless job, but we appreciate the work that you do. You know, we as administrators, and especially building leaders, see a glimpse of some of the things that you get sent to you in emails and so forth and so on, and, and you always handle it with grace, and we, we absolutely appreciate all the support that you've given us. So Lauren, we wish you well. You're not going very far. Sophie's coming up to ninth grade. Jeremy, you're also not going very far. Bianca's already in high school, and you have others that are coming up. And Jody, you and I go way back. Jody actually was on the Board that appointed me principal 12 years ago. So, you know, there's a special place in my heart for Jody, and Steve, I don't know if he left, but he did. Is he here? No, he left. And rec basketball, she knows my entire family. You know, I had her younger son, so we go way back. So you're not going very far either. We'll, we'll stay in touch, so. I'm here to talk about Naomi, though. So let's talk a little bit about Naomi. Just so everyone knows and is clear, Naomi didn't retire till like yesterday. She waited till the very, very end, went to Maureen, I think, 16 times to extend the deadline for retirement, and it was a really tough decision. And I kind of encompassed wife in my few notes that I wrote down. Ms. Gilbert comes from a family of educators, and as... Ms. Gilbert comes from a family of educators, and as such, she wanted to do everything in her power to go to a different career path. She worked in the restaurant industry, dabbled in real estate, even worked for publishing and printing companies. None of these professions made Naomi feel invested or fulfilled. After a life-changing event, she realized that art was her true passion, and specifically, teaching art to children was what she really was destined to do. With a bachelor's from Boston University in painting, she was accepted to Columbia University's Teachers College and received her master's degree in art. And we hired her in the Hastings Public Schools 27 years ago. She spent all 27 years of her career as an educator here with us in Hastings. She began in the middle school and shortly began teaching in the high school as well. In 2015, she was selected as Chair of the Art Department for grades K-12. She has been an excellent leader and an advocate for the arts. Her students have always provided nothing but the most positive of feedback, and Ms. Gilbert has always reciprocated with her kind and always positive and infectious personality. Her students have won many art contests and have even had their work displayed at the Bruce Museum in Connecticut. Thanks to her vision, our most gifted artists now display their work in our annual AP Art Show that Naomi created. Deciding to retire was not an easy decision for Naomi, and she waited until the very last minute to turn in her letter. This is because she absolutely loves what she does. She's had an exceptional career, a career that she can look back to with pride and admiration. All I can say is that she did it the right way. So on behalf of the Hastings, all of the Hastings students that you have touched in some way, and all of your colleagues, congratulations, Naomi. Job well done.
Naomi, you'll have to walk up here, please. And you get to shake all of our hands. That's the Miss America part.
We also have two retirees from our Facilities Department. We have got George Giannone and Calvin Williams. Joe Mariano, would you please come and say a few words?
So six years ago, I came to Hastings. It was blessed with an amazingly hard-working Facilities Department. I inherited that. And these three guys, George Giannone, Juan Villamor, and Calvin Williams are three of the best, and I appreciate and thank, I'm grateful for you guys. Calvin, Calvin has been a dedicated-
I'm sorry, Calvin, you'll have to come up.
Calvin's been a dedicated, reliable, and hard-working employee for 21 years here in Hastings. Calvin has always been a soft-spoken, kind, and humble gentleman. He is a man who walks his faith and has integrity, and who I could always rely on to get the job done on the night shift. Calvin is someone who is very good at his job and knows all aspects of his job, which is the reason he became the go-to guy at night when the supervisor was out. I have great respect for Calvin and his abilities, and he will be sorely missed, especially in the summers where Calvin was the best in the district at doing carpets. I remember every summer for days Calvin laying carpets out in the hallway and shampooing them with great pride. I recently was talking to Calvin's night supervisor, and he said Calvin was the best cleaner and carpet guy, and that he is going to be very hard to replace. He was worried how we're going to replace Calvin. So he had the respect of all his coworkers and myself. Calvin, congratulations. God bless you. I know that you walk by faith, and I pray that that walk takes you to all the places your heart desires. Enjoy Jamaica, enjoy your beautiful family, and thank you for all the service of Hastings.
Calvin, you get to come back. George?
George Giannone has been a dedicated, reliable, and hard-working employee for 24 years here at Hastings. I personally have never met anyone who cares about the building he works in more than George cared about Hillside. It was a great comfort to me knowing that George was always going to do the best he could, and that the building would always be ready and look its best under George's leadership. Another thing I always admired about George was how much he cares about people, and that treating people fairly was in the forefront of his mind always. George is someone I have grown a great respect for through the six years I worked with him. I always respect someone who wears their heart on their sleeve. George, I have had many conversations, most good, some bad, all honest. And it was in those conversations that I learned the most about this man's heart. He was always concerned about people and always tried to see the good in everyone. That is truly a great attribute. Another attribute I learned that George possessed through the years was his God-given gift to speak and speak out. A gift that sometimes got him in trouble. I would often tell George, you need to be slower to speak and quicker to listen. I'm not sure if he heard me. But he has many, many meetings and events that we went to, I would often look forward to hear what George had to say, and I think everyone else did too. Anyway, George, we want you to know that you will always be missed, and you are missed. You are a special person with a big heart. Everyone has great respect for the work ethic you possess and your giant generous heart. I can remember when we first heard that you were retiring, Amy Cases called me into the office and said, how are we ever going to replace George? And I thought, I know, I agree. The fact is, we will never be able to replace you, George, because you are the one of a kind and someone who will always be remembered for your tireless energy and determination to make Hillside the best it can be. I pray your retirement brings you many years of blessings with your wife and children, also that they are filled with unforgettable memories, good health. God bless you all the best.
He wants to speak. Can he speak? He wants to speak. He wants to speak. I told him.
I have to thank you people because this Board of Ed has done more for my custodians than any other Board of Ed in the 23 years that I am here. You's really opened your heart and stepped up for them. I mean, I can't appreciate that more. That really made me feel so good. Jews are not on this pedestal. You'll always be on this pedestal because of that. And I want to thank the community too for always being there for me, my teachers, my principals. I ain't going to mention everybody's name, maybe one or two, like Myers. The Myers, I love yous. Maureen, you were always there for me. I went to one day and I says, Maureen, you gotta help, you gotta help. She said, what's the matter, George? My daughter needs a part-time job in the summer. God, George, I thought something terrible happened. So thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank all of yous. I really appreciate how you really stepped up for all of us. I forgot my Joe. Joe, I'm sorry.
Left hand, left hand.
I miss you.
Say hello and like goodbye to everybody.
I know.
How much hope can I see, son? Get to play Motown.
Motown coming up.
For any retirees and families who feel that they would like to exit the meeting, you certainly may because the remainder is primarily business. Thank you so much for joining us. It was such a pleasure to recognize your work for the district for all the years. We still have a number of business items that we need to conduct this evening. So we're going to, I'm just going to double-check that we haven't missed anything, but the next item is the placement of services for CSE and CPSE. And I just want to ask the trustees if there are any questions or comments regarding these placements. Is there a motion to approve the placements for CSE and CPSE?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? The next item is the tenure recommendation for Melissa Samansky. Dr. Henny Piedmont?
Thank you very much. I'd like to recommend Ms. Melissa Samansky for early tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Samansky joined the district at the same time that I did in 2019, and her tenure date would be 2023, but the recommendation is to move the tenure date to this year, effective June 30th of 2021. Given the contributions made by Ms. Samansky, which are many, it's so important to maintain further stability in the district, which is why the early recommendation of tenure to me is a necessity. Within a few weeks of arrival in her first year, Ms. Samansky had to focus attention on student needs due to a significant shift from No Child Left Behind, also known as NCLB, which was driven by student test scores to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which made student growth, equity, and access primary considerations. Ms. Samansky was the curator of these changes and spent tireless hours poring over various reports that were provided by the New York State Department of Education. During the summer, school districts examine all the spring assessment data in grades three through eight in English Language Arts and Mathematics to identify any learners who do not make or did not make specific progress as deemed appropriate by New York State. Ms. Samansky worked closely with school administrators to identify students who were not making progress over the course of a number of years. Along with school administrators, she conducted a gap analysis, which was an essential analytical tool to identify the particular areas of need and the resources to close these achievement gaps. Another important function overseen by Ms. Samansky involved the organization of a curriculum thought group to begin a system-wide conversation about curriculum and instruction at all levels. This conversation involved internal and external stakeholders who shared their insights about how curriculum, instruction, assessment, the learning environment, and professional learning are viewed by these stakeholders. This helped to facilitate ongoing discussions across the district that prepared us for a K-12 discussion about transparency and alignment. Discussions from book studies, especially around the book What Could School Be by Ted Dentersmith, served as an anchor text to consider what factors contribute to innovation, coherence, and sustainability. Ms. Samansky collaborates with teachers, department chairs, and administrators to examine the content areas of mathematics and science to align the curriculum to the New York State learning standards. Curriculum committee work is ongoing and continuous. Collaboration across all grades and content areas has also produced curriculum synopses that outline the broad strokes of the learning plan. During the pandemic, seems like it was years ago, Ms. Samansky worked endlessly with teachers and administrators on the development of the remote learning plan and the redevelopment of the remote learning plan and a redevelopment of the redeveloped remote learning plan. Her Appy Hour was a mechanism for ongoing collaboration and professional learning with teachers who were using new technologies to provide remote instruction. When schools reopened in September of last year, Ms. Samansky worked with teachers and administrators to identify assessment tools to detect learning gaps. The Special Education Report, conducted a number of years ago, referenced the importance of an Assistant Superintendent to oversee curriculum, assessment, instruction, and professional learning, which contributes to improved outcomes for students with IEPs. Ms. Samansky works alongside the special education leaders and building leaders to implement recommendations and to identify gap-closing practices. Ms. Samansky has worked tirelessly and with a laser-like focus on the needs of children while also supporting educators and administrators. The work underway needs to continue, and Ms. Samansky has been a steady advocate and leader. With enthusiasm and confidence, I recommend Ms. Samansky for tenure effective June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Valerie. Are there any questions or comments regarding this tenure recommendation?
I would like to say something. I'd just like to say that I very much appreciate, Valerie, what you had to say about Melissa, and that I want to be very clear for people who are here and people who are watching, that our decision as a board to grant early tenure to you, Melissa, is because it was something that we talked about and we agreed was a good thing for our district. And that I, in thinking about coming to the meeting tonight, I wanted to really go on record for saying that this was not in any way an end run around anything or anyone. Wasn't an end run around any process- Wasn't an end run around any process, a new board coming on board. It was about what do we think we need to do at this moment in time for our district in the best interest of the district, of the children. And so for me, it's a no-brainer. And quite frankly, if I were to fast forward two years, I have no doubt that you would be getting tenure anyway, just based on what you've already done, given the numbers of people who I've been through who've been granted tenure. So it's a pleasure to be here to be able to vote on this for you this evening.
I also wanted to explain my thinking, as we discussed as a board and came to this agreement, that, you know, in a few years, there is going to be a dearth of administrators. There are a lot retiring, and we know this is on the horizon. And it was very important to us to show Melissa that we really stand behind the work that she's done, that we believe in her, that we want her here. And Valerie enumerated the many areas she's worked in, worked on. But I wanted to highlight that this is somebody who is highly organized, so up on all of the regulations and procedures and, you know, has gotten us grants that we've never received before to offset costs that we otherwise couldn't have funded. And all with grace and time for anybody who has questions. And if she functions like that during this crazy two-year period, you know, I can only imagine what we will see when things settle down a little bit. And so in that way, it was the stability that we wanted for our district with yet another change occurring to say, this is, you know, the work ethic and the smarts and the passion for learning that we want in our district, and we want to say yes to that. So, thank you.
As a board, we try not to talk directly about personnel. Everything we talk about, Melissa, was always positive. I appreciate your hours, your efforts, your ideas, and your thinking. This vote I'm going to abstain on, though. I don't, I don't really believe in early tenure. But we are so lucky that we have you helping us with the transitions next year and the year after that. We are so lucky that you found our district and a role in our district. And every year you stay makes our district stronger. So I don't want it to be misrepresented that this vote would be about the person because it's not the person who is running is strong. But I think it's going to be unanimous. I just like, I'm a stakeholder and I don't, I did tenure and I am a little concerned about how it looks, us accelerating tenure in one spot but not for others. But I know this had all positives when we discussed it. Thank you, Melissa.
I'm also going to abstain. I unfortunately wasn't able to be in the discussion and haven't really had a chance to fully understand all the different sides. I think you're doing a great job, as everyone said. You know, to Jeremy's point, I've never been a huge fan of early tenure, and I just haven't had a chance to really, a lot of times with the board, you know, things happen very quickly. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to be a part of the discussion, so I'm going to abstain from the vote as well.
I want to say something about Melissa also. I just want to say something more broadly about the stability in the district. I think I naively came on the board five years ago thinking that stability was an easy thing. You could provide, you could produce, you could create somehow with just the right this and just the right that, and all of a sudden it magically comes together. Boy, have I figured out that's not the case. So what do I do? What do I think about? I think about how can we get ourselves in a position to create that stability, realizing it's just a system of so many different things, from board members to educators, to teachers, to administrators, and there's a certain kind of secret sauce involved in it. And as I've watched you over the last two years, Melissa, I see you as a critical piece of that secret sauce, as a foundational piece of that. I remember hearing five years ago when I first got on the board about vertical articulation, horizontal articulation, how critical it is to have a vision from K to 12, to have a vision across the grades, and how critical it was to have that integrated between grades and to have it consistent across grades. And then something came up first year, and then something came up the second year, and then something came up, and we didn't have a leader to do that. And your leadership in bringing together very busy professionals, very busy teachers, who all have their own ways of teaching and their own ways that they've built up over time, and really shepherding that process has been impressive. And I've really appreciated your ability to do that. And, you know, the output we see, which is this skeletal framework of a K to 12 articulated curriculum in terms of synopses. And on one hand, they look like a lot of one or two sheet pages from Microsoft Word, and behind that, there was an inordinate amount of collaboration and just pulling a lot of different people's thoughts together, you know? And I think that's something you're very good at, which is, how do I bring voices to the room and make sure they're all heard, but make sure we're still moving forward, right? And I think that's the trick of collaboration. And when I think about what we need foundationally, you bring that. I think we need that as a district, and I think you can be a great role model for that as we move forward, and you can't do it alone, right? We all have to do that work together. And so back to my original point, early tenure for you. I see this as a vote of confidence. That's how I'm voting it, as a vote of confidence that what I've seen, probably in two years, you've probably put about four years of effort in already. So one could argue she already has four years under her belt, just in the sheer number of hours that you've put in. And, you know, I'm really excited for the things to come. And thank you, Valerie, to the foundation you've helped build, because I know a lot of that was a partnership with, between the two of you, as you've really taken on a lot of big topics. And I've said this to you before, Melissa, I'll say it again. I think our big key is how do we move not too fast and not too slow at the same time? How do we find that right pacing? Because I think it's all in the pacing with this work. And how do we stay in connection and communication with the community throughout, right? So I think that's just so critical. So I wholeheartedly support this early tenure. Thank you.
I'm going to speak very briefly and just say how appreciative I am of the fact that you were the person who stepped into the role of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, because we didn't have somebody at that level at the time that you joined our district. And I have seen that in this short tenure that we've enjoyed having you and Valerie as partners at the helm of this district. I have three children in this district, one at each school. I see the immense progress that has made under the most dire of circumstances. And there are not enough words that I can use to express to you. As a parent, as a board member, for what you have sustained, for the time that you devote to your work, for the true consistency, I see it and I appreciate it every single day that you give, every single hour of commitment. People don't see that. We do. And I see it not solely in the timestamp of the emails that I receive from you. I see it in the real world difference it makes in my children's learning. I can't capture that in words, but I thank you. And you are the right person to be elevated to this. You're the right person now, and you'll be that much better in two more years. Thank you.
Well, so much has been said already, and I just want to add that in 2018, it's hard for folks who may be new to the district to realize, but the board couldn't agree about having this role at all. And it was one of the things that I argued foremost was to have an Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. And I could not have imagined that the person who would fill that role would be you, Melissa, and what you've accomplished. I can't even fathom where the district would be through this pandemic without the role in general, but then you in that role. I think it would have been an impossibility for our district to survive and provide the type of instruction that our children deserved with a lean central office without that role established. So I fully support the notion of providing early tenure as well.
Lauren, is it appropriate to have you just explain to some people who've asked this question about, you know, the nature of giving input for tenure or that sort of thing when it comes to administrators and that process?
Well, I do, I do want to say, because there were some questions in the community that came toward the board today, asking about community input. And I just want to say for anyone who is interested to know that there is no policy or practice in regard to community input for any tenure position, that the role of the Board of Education is to provide that input. And any untenured employee is receiving input in their daily work, whether it's from their supervisors or from other community input. There is no separate timeframe by which an untenured employee has a period of review, but rather it's a part of their work in the district and it's ongoing. So there was no step missed other than the suggestion that the tenure occur earlier. Does that help? Is that helpful? Is there a motion to approve the tenure for Melissa Samansky?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you. I'll be brief in my remarks and very long in my gratitude. So it means a lot, and I love this district. And I want to affirm my commitment to the members of our learning community, especially the children, and all the responsibilities associated with my role. I do not take that lightly. Valerie, I want to thank you for making the recommendation. And to the board, I want to thank you for your support, your faith in my leadership, and your commitment to the continuity of this district. And Maureen, I want to thank you for your partnership. If you only knew how much you anchor this place. And to our team, Melissa D., and Lynn, and Fee, I'm very honored to work with all of you. This district is a very special place, and it is truly my pleasure to lead here and learn here. And I want to recognize the faculty, all members, for their incredible efforts and support of children. And it's been tough, the pandemic, and I really look forward to our continued work together. And I believe in us, and I'm really proud to be here. Thank you.
We're going to move on to announcements. I think it's just the announcement that the high school graduation will be this Thursday, June 24th, at 6:00 PM at the Burke Estate.
Yay!
Keep your fingers crossed for good weather. So now, we have administrative comments from Melissa?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate our wonderful music department on their recent outdoor performances. And specifically, I'd like to recognize the successful Hastings High School concert in late May and two recent seamless middle school concerts. Thank you to our talented, dedicated musicians and to the entire department for persevering through the pandemic and making sure that the show went on. So thank you for our music department.
Sophia, do you have a student report? Or any comments?
I do. Okay, so first, the academic challenge team last weekend won nationals for the fourth year in a row, which is very exciting. And I had to miss the last meeting because I was at prom, which was so much fun and such a great way to end a bummer of a year. We were at the waterfront. It was beautiful. The weather was perfect, and I'm so grateful to Mr. A. for making it happen. Thank you. This is my last meeting, but I would like to thank the board a lot. The past two years, it's become very, very clear to me that this position is not just for show. And every time I speak, it's clear that you listen to what I'm saying. And that made me work really, really hard to make sure I was expressing the opinions and feelings of my fellow students. And Sabine and I, Sabine can't make it tonight, but we received many applications, and we selected our next liaison, and I'm so excited for Gus Reson to come in next year. So thank you so much. And, well, I've learned a lot. I've learned how to speak in front of real people here. I've learned how to speak in front of many people on Zoom, which I think is harder. I've learned that, well, on some days, I've learned that I definitely don't want to be on a Board of Ed. On other days, I think this is definitely in my future. So thank you so much for having this position and for taking it seriously and listening to everything students have to say.
Can I just make one comment?
Of course.
First, Sophia, I want to thank you for taking this position seriously, because when you first took it, I remember talking to you about it. And, you know, some student liaisons have not taken it that seriously, from what I've seen. Some didn't show up, some, but you actually put some thought into it. You took it seriously, and your comments, you showed up, and your comments were always a glimpse into what students actually are thinking. And, you know, that was really valuable to me. I think it was valuable to the other board members. But I just really appreciate you actually taking it seriously. I hope that, I don't know if Sabine's doing it again next year, so I hope that Sabine and Gus take it as seriously as you do. You showed, it was a great model of what this position is supposed to be. So thanks so much.
There's this suggestion to move one of the appointments up, because we actually have the appointment attending the meeting this evening, and we'd like to have an opportunity before the meeting goes much longer to have him present. So at this point, we would like to ask any cases to come on up?
Oh. I want to begin by congratulating so many of you. Valerie, I've known Valerie since the days in Clarkstown, and Valerie was a wonderful leader then and continued to be so here. So Valerie, best of luck to you in your retirement. Also, to our board members who are moving on. Lauren will be seeing you very soon in first grade. And Jody, thank you so much for your service, and Jeremy, also thank you so much. I am very pleased to be here this evening to speak on behalf of Michael LaRocco. Michael LaRocco has been classroom teacher in grades two through four for the past 13 years at PS 41 in the New York City Department of Education. He spent 10 of those years in an ICT setting. In addition, he served as Acting Assistant Principal from July 2019 to June 2020 during a one-year vacancy. Mr. LaRocco holds a Bachelor of Arts in English from the State University of New York at New Paltz, a Master of Science in Childhood Education from Adelphi University, and a Master of Science in School Building Leadership from State University of New York at City College. He holds certification in Childhood Education 1 through 6 and School Building Leader. During his tenure at PS 41, Mr. LaRocco has served in a variety of leadership roles. He has been the teacher representative on the school leadership team, ICT liaison, Equity Committee member, affinity group facilitator, data specialist, grade leader, and building union representative. In addition, Mr. LaRocco received the honor of being nominated for the 2021 Big Apple Award, a distinction that recognizes and celebrates New York City teachers who inspire students, model great teaching, and enrich their school communities. His references describe Mr. LaRocco as a responsible, smart, dedicated, reflective educator. He is a team player who has voluntarily taken on any role and provided support wherever it has been needed. Mr. LaRocco is skilled at building relationships with students, colleagues, and families. One reference shared, we'd love to keep him forever, and another shared, he will be getting a great educator, one of the kindest people I have ever met. We are excited to welcome Mr. LaRocco to our Hillside family and know that he will be a wonderful asset as the new Assistant Principal to our school and our community. Thank you.
So this is actually personnel, which is six A. appointments, and it's number five that we're looking at. Are there any questions or comments regarding the recommended appointment for Michael LaRocco? Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Michael LaRocco as Assistant Principal at Hillside Elementary School?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Welcome, Mr. LaRocco.
Thank you all, excuse me, thank you all very much. I greatly appreciate this time and this opportunity to work with these cases and join the Hastings family. Congratulations to all the retirees. Best of luck in your next chapters, and I know we'll probably see much of each other on an informal basis perhaps, but congratulations again, and I'm looking forward to starting up in a couple weeks and get rolling, so thank you, thank you so much.
And Mr. LaRocco will start on July 1st, but is here this week, so welcome and thank you.
We'll just modify the minutes to reflect the correct date.
There's an error in the document that's posted, but his effective date is July 1st.
Thank you.
He will modify.
So we want them in sooner than later.
We want them tomorrow.
Yep.
You did.
Thank you.
Welcome. So we will now jump back to the order of the agenda at this point. This is an opportunity for public comment. The public may comment to the Board of Education. If you could please state your name, and if you're a resident of Hastings, your comments are limited to three minutes. If you could please limit the first comment period to any items related to our agenda. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Doreen Bueker, Hastings resident. I just wanted to take this time to thank the outgoing board members for your service. I really appreciate all you've done. I don't know what I'm getting myself into, probably, but I listened very closely to Jody and Lauren, to your advice. Really appreciate it, heard it, took it in. And to the administrators, I hope that I am as good a board member as these three have been for you. So thank you so much, guys.
It doesn't appear that we have any further comment? Oh, Melissa has one that she received to read. Thank you, Melissa.
This is from Jennifer Destin, Barbara Rizzo, Melissa Sperga, and Kafira Wilderman. They sent in a letter to the board, and they asked me to read it tonight. Dear Hastings Board Trustees, as parents of children in the Hastings schools, we are thrilled to see that Melissa Samansky is being recommended for early tenure and enthusiastically support this recommendation. In her two years as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction in the midst of unprecedented educational disruptions due to the pandemic, Ms. Samansky has not one stop thinking about how to optimize instruction and outcomes for all learners. This is evidenced by her data-driven reevaluation and optimization of the district's K-12 math curriculum. Ms. Samansky developed a path forward by collaborating with teachers and department chairs across all three schools. She also took on other initiatives that have been requested for years, including her work with teachers, to make public course synopsis, reevaluating the district's curriculum using a culturally responsive framework, and much more. Ms. Samansky operates with a listen-and-learn style that allows stakeholders to collaborate and find common ground and optimize solutions. As we look to the next two years of changing district leadership, the district's goal of supporting all children educationally as well as emotionally can best be achieved by retaining Ms. Samansky. We strongly believe that the continuity of her leadership will help the district achieve success. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Melissa. Doesn't appear that we have any further public comments. We'll move on to the business items in the agenda. There are 10, excuse me, 19 items. Are there any questions or comments regarding the 19 items of business? I just want to personally point out that I'm pleased to see items 17 and 18. In the business items, 17 is allocating resources to work with big ideas. It's a proposal for a new mathematics curriculum resource. And 18 is an agreement with Project Lead the Way, which is a STEAM and engineering program that will be accessible for our middle school and high school learners, and I know that our community will greatly benefit from these two new pieces of curriculum that will be infused in the middle school and high school. Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 19?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We now have two district appointments. The first is a resolution appointing Melissa Samansky as interim superintendent of schools commencing on July 1, 2021 until July 31, 2021, and the employment agreement corresponding with that. Are there any questions or comments regarding this appointment?
Thank you, Melissa.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of interim superintendent Melissa Samansky for July 1 until July 31, 2021?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Melissa.
We'll make sure that nothing big happens in July.
You know that it will, Jody.
She's just jinxed it.
The second is 5B. It's the resolution appointing Dr. William McCursie as interim superintendent of schools commencing August 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and the employment agreement for Dr. William McCursie. Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding this appointment? Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. William McCursie as interim superintendent of schools commencing August 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Congratulations to Dr. McCursie, and I do know that he has reached out to various stakeholders about times he will be onsite in district for meet and greets until his beginning date in August. We then have additional appointments, and we've already done number five. So this would be appointments 1 through 4 and then 6. Are there any questions or comments regarding these appointments? Is there a motion to approve the appointments 1 through 4 and then 6?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? There are four amendments. Are there any questions or comments regarding these amendments? Is there a motion to approve the amendments 1 through 4?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? There are two leaves of absence. Are there any questions and comments regarding these leaves of absence? Is there a motion to approve leaves of absence 1 and 2?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
There are the minutes for the June 7, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from June 7, 2021?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We'll move on to old business. There, the first item is regarding the American Rescue Plan funds and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act funds. Were there additional pieces of information that needed to be presented to the board?
Yes, so the plan for the disbursement of the American Rescue Plan Act funds was presented previously, but we do have some slides for the CCRSA. They're just being uploaded now. I guess for tonight, I can just walk through them here, and then the presentation will be online for the public to watch through, if Patrick may just see a minute to get it up.
It's on Board Docs, too.
It is on Board Docs, exactly. So tonight, we just wanted to give an update again on the other amount of money that we did receive in addition to the ARP funds, which is the federal, sorry, Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Act Supplemental Appropriations, also known as the CRSA. And just to remind the board and the public that we did receive an allocation of $1.5 million. On the slide deck, there's kind of just a breakdown of the buckets in which the federal government broke that down, but overall, there's kind of like a set-aside amount, but, you know, we'll speak to how then, you know, some of those amounts have to be used or allocated for specific reasons. The grant is retroactive, and you're allowed to go back, starting with March 13, 2020 through September 30, 2022. Sorry, go to the next slide, three. So just some examples of uses of funds, any activity, and again, this is, there's about 18, but I'm just kind of like at a high level, kind of adding some things in which we've been looking at in terms of how we're making recommendations for this spending of this fund. So it is any activity authorized by the IDEA Act, which is the, it's for Students with Disabilities Act, addressing the academic impact of lost instructional time among the students in the district, and including low-income students, students with disabilities, English-language learners, racially and ethnic minorities, and students experiencing homelessness, COVID-related expenses dating back to March 2020, purchasing of educational technology, mental health support, providing principals and school leaders resources to address their building-based needs, implementing activities for summer learning, enrichment, and supplemental after-school programs, inspection, testing, upgrades to indoor air quality, including air conditioning systems, window and door replacements. So again, just looking at the $1.5 million we have, and as I mentioned, much of this money can be used to reimburse districts for funds that they've already allocated since the beginning of the pandemic in March 2020. So at this point, we've broken down, you know, the allocation to kind of three buckets in which we think, you know, as we think about writing this grant. The first part is the academic impact of lost instructional time, including, as I mentioned, the IDEA component, summer and after-school services. And for that, and this would be, of course, moving forward, starting sometime this summer, and we're allocating $700,000 toward that, to those needs. We are looking to reimburse the district for COVID-related expenses for about $600,000, although we know we did spend more than that, but right now, that's the recommendation to refund us, as we are also going to try to, oh, sorry, I'm just so tired, trying to get some additional FEMA funds to close some of that gap. So as of right now, we're looking to put about $600,000 in this grant toward those expenses we've incurred, and also looking at the potential of facilities upgrades, including air conditioning, as well as some additional windows that are in need of replacement. How we kind of look right now, we have been speaking, Melissa and I have been trying to gain some input. Melissa's been working with the building levels, as well as some of the chair people to kind of get some ideas and flush them out about where we think the money should be spent. And again, this is also coming in September, you'll be doing some screeners to kind of get better understanding of where those needs are. So currently, these are some of the ideas in which we're going to build some into the grant. Supplies for a daily living skills classroom that will be established here in the Farragut complex for both middle school students this year and in following years, high school students as well. Passion projects, including school mural projects, transition coordinator position, these are, again, some items that came through, both through our survey data, when we were looking into how we would spend our ARP funds, as well as other feedback we've received. Creating AIS support periods in the middle school, especially in math and science, adaptive technology to assist students in those AIS classes, mental health, first aid programming, and that was recommended by our guidance department, challenge success funding, advisory programs for the high school and middle school, creation and funding of extra classroom activities, and we would be working with our HGA leadership and development of those positions, direct instruction over the summer months, including a possible summer bridge program for next summer. Students' needs would be determined through Students' needs would be determined through diagnostic assessment. Some also ideas that were brought up were professional learning for teachers, such as professional learning in areas of literacy, dyslexia, universal design for learning, and also putting funds aside to allow for further collaboration for all of our teachers to, you know, fund in order for them to be able to work together with their teams, identifying, working for individual students, and curriculum. The COVID-related expenses are pretty straightforward. I think we, the last tally was well over a million dollars. We would be looking for this, the reimbursement here to target expenses such as personnel, including nursing, additional nursing services, staffing, substitutes, leave replacements, obviously the dividers, which it'd be nice to get some money back on those, and as you're aware, we have so many of them, and upgrades to our ventilation system that we made early on. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add anything else at this point?
So this, we did talk about different funds that we are able to apply for through the grant process, and with this one, this technically does not require the input process in the same way the other one does. However, that still continues to be very important to us. So we have been looking close to the work, to the people doing the work, to ask, you know, based on what we've seen, based on what students' needs are, and based on what you're living on the ground, help us to understand what will be most beneficial. So we're working through all of that together now. And there's a lot of overlap, actually, in terms of some of the things that were originally suggested from that input and discussion process, and a lot of direct support came up in terms of how we might implement funding, and so we're continuing to look at all of that. And it requires, you know, taking a look at actually working the numbers on each of those things, and then making sure that, you know, we're looking systemically at what that looks like at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school.
And the grant is due July 15?
Oh, yes, we have the extension. It's still coming up quickly, but July 15.
And with any grant, we'll be able to tweak it if, when the screeners are administered in the fall, and we found we need to shift some of that to another area, we could, we would have the flexibility to do so. Considering we probably don't have approval until the fall. That was just an update on those ones.
So the idea that July is quiet is untrue, because you're going to be busy submitting all these proposals.
And we do have a lot of good curriculum work that's already underway, and I suspect that even engaging in that process in July will also be generative. So we'll continue to look at our moving, shifting data points and involving some voices as we figure out the allocation for that one.
To both of you, or either of you, the numbers are obviously round and friendly and early. You mentioned, Maureen, we had over a million dollars' worth of COVID expenses. How do we decide how much we'd want to claw back? As a naive, you know, non-budget guy here, wouldn't we want to claw back as much as possible so that we'd have as much flexibility moving forward? Would we want to go, or why did you guys think about a 7-6 split instead of a 1 million clawback and 300,000 split?
Well, part of it, you're right, I mean, does gain us greater flexibility in getting some of those reimbursements, because that money comes back into our coffers, and then we can have more time to use it. I think, as I mentioned, we needed to get some kind of framework with the grant, and part of the piece in terms of that reimbursement, I'm trying to also see how much money we may be able to get back from FEMA prior to that, as well as like E-Rate and some of these other funding sources that are out there. So if, say, instructional technology and some of those other connectivity costs that we incurred, we may be able to get money out of E-Rate funding, which is specifically to technology, as well as the FEMA with cleaning supplies and things such as that, and PPE. So the areas of expense that we incurred that I feel like we would not be able to get back from FEMA is what we're kind of like shifting there. But as I had mentioned, we will, with all federal grants, who do have the opportunity to make adjustments, if we found we did not need in one area or another as much funding, then we would be able to make that shift. So, but I think, you know, we understand there will be some immediate needs that'll be happening next year, and we wanted to make sure that we did give ourselves some flexibility while we're flushing it out.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
In general, you know, my first take on it would be to maximize the reimbursement. You explained why we're leaving some out there for other grants, but definitely, we'd like to control spending in a less rushed manner.
Exactly.
And the more we could do clawback, seems that the community would have more input, whether to put it to special education needs, or other resources, or to affect the budget in other ways, but both of your leadership is appreciated, even if it's over a July 4 weekend.
Thank you.
Were there any other thoughts or questions regarding the additional federal funding that's coming through the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act? One thing I do notice that I appreciate is regarding the $700,000, that round number that will be allocated in terms of direct service to students, that there's a variety of service that's provided, that it's a balance of academic intervention services, mental health, and also more holistic and creative opportunities for learning to build greater social stamina and community growth. So I think that the input that you receive from our educators, I think, I like that there's a balance of all those components, because I think it will reach a larger portion of the student community.
So I guess I will now, should I just continue with the construction?
Yeah, continue on to the construction update.
But I'm not sure if we're going to get on that screen. So again, the slide deck, again, just, we've been showing, as some people may have been following along, the progress.
Yes, it's in Board Docs, if anyone is looking.
So again, now we're starting to really get, you know, see some real changes. So in the first shot on Slide 2, and I love when they do the drone images for us, because we really get a really great sense of the project. So the first slide there shows the before and after, the start of the pergola foundation, and you can see the construction of the forms in which they use to pour those foundations. The second here is the creation of wall pockets in order to expose the existing structural steel and members in the existing hallway, and when you're actually in the room, you can see holes in which they're connecting into the existing structure there, so it's pretty fascinating to see it both from inside the building and these shots as well. Again, this is really just amazing work to watch these gentlemen do when they're, and they do it so quickly. Here, there's, the next few slides are the creation of the formwork and the rebar, and the pouring of the back retaining wall footings. So again, there's a few shots, about four shots in there. Again, this is just another shot in which you can see the back of those retaining walls being poured. And now the front shot is for the pergola footings, and again, this was a really big piece in terms of just getting them just exactly right on the site, as everything else of the way that building flows is tied into those pergola footings in the front of the building. Just again, further shots of this, it was pretty incredible to watch them do this work. And then 8 here, I think the last time I had mentioned that they're bringing in the gas pipe from one side of the building over across the roof of Hillside onto the other side, and I did ask about the concern around storms and things, and they actually said this is a more secure way to run a gas line, when I did inquire about that. And then we can see the mobilization of the crane that came, I believe, last Friday, and even today, actually, there was video that was shared with me of them placing the different structural steel into the, into the building. And then last but not least, we did have an inspector come onto the site this week to oversee, to ensure that all the footings and things work.
This is fascinating. We are going to make time for you to come to see this behind the scenes. This is absolutely fascinating. Melissa Maureen and I were there, and you can stay there for hours to hear the parts that no one will ever see, but that is the basis, it's the skeleton of the building itself. Rob is fantastic, he's our construction manager, and everything there has a story and a specialized tradesperson associated with it. So it's really a sight to see, and they're just so skilled and so tactical and so, you know, brilliant in how they pull all that together. I don't know how many tradespeople are onsite there at the same time, and Rob's job is to coordinate and provide the choreography for all of that to work. So it's just, it's going to be stunning when it's all, you know, when it's completed, and we are just very fortunate to have the team that's there, but it's so impressive and such an enjoyable visit.
It is. I would welcome any of you to come up and let us know when you want to come up, and we'll bring you up to the site, because it is actually incredible, and yet you have just even the amount of detail that, as I mentioned, the pergola footings, and, you know, even when those discussions are happening, you have a variety of different engineers and architects and design architects and contractors, and just the site, the site surveyors, and just to kind of get everything laid out perfectly and the different steps, it's really amazing and makes you appreciate, although I know it was quite a bit of money, you can understand why when you're, you know, seeing the work that actually is required to create this building.
You want them to get the math right, a little smidgen off, and it will not be right. It won't stand, so it's, so every, you know, every dollar that you invest, you're investing in sort of the quality and expertise of people who do this work, so, and they're doing it at a pace that, you know, Maureen keeps them all organized. Maureen and Joe are really amazing, and their oversight of every piece of this and every penny that can be saved, Maureen's on the case.
I even have an inspector, an external person coming up. No, it's great. Valerie actually gets right in there, she's a little bit braver than I am, she brings her correct footwear and...
Well, you didn't, you didn't show the one where I was walking the plank, they said you have to walk the plank to get from one spot to the other.
I was like, I don't know if you want to do that.
But you do look like you're peering into everything, you're kind of like, ooh!
I loved it, every piece of it, I loved it.
Wow. I was a little bit worried about you walking on those planks, though.
I know, I saw both of you disappear when I did.
Then steps backward.
They're like, I don't want to be present to...
Tell that story.
Definitely not, definitely not.
Thank you for sharing that, Maureen.
You're welcome.
The last piece of old business are two pieces of policy, policy 3230 and 3240. This is the second read of the organizational chart and a revision of policy 3240. Again, these are pieces that are part of the policy audit that's been going on throughout the year with the guidance of both District Council and NISBA. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding these two policies?
So, so Chloe, 3240 is not one we would get from NISBA, right? Because that's specific to our district, is that, that's correct? And, and I just wanted to make sure, I know, Sylvie, you sent this earlier today to legal counsel, but they reviewed it not just for the one question, but for just the broader...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Everything is above board and in legal compliance, and has been guided by consulting with legal counsel every step of the way, and in coordination with Ms. Samansky.
Legal did help craft the revision to 3240 directly, and we wanted to make sure that it was moving back and forth to reflect accurately what was depicted in 3230. So yes, they've been involved the entire step of the way.
Are there any additional questions or thoughts about these two pieces of policy? Is there a motion to approve policy 3230 and policy 3240?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? The two pieces of new business have to do with just calendaring. The first is just to confirm that the annual organization meeting of the Board of Education will be on Monday, July 12, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. And the second is a draft of the recommended Board of Education meeting dates for the school year 2021, 2022. Are there any questions or thoughts regarding these two recommended pieces of the calendar? Is there, I guess I need to ask for a motion to approve both the date for the organizational meeting and the recommended meeting dates? So moved. And a second?
Second.
If I don't get to move it, I'm not the second.
All in favor? We have the second public comment period. If you would like to speak to the Board of Education, if you could please state your name, and if you're a resident of Hastings, the second public comment period may be regarding any district business, and we suggest that you limit your remarks to two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dorothy Nagel. I'm the parent of a rising fifth grader. I've been a resident of Hastings for eight years. I'm here to speak on behalf of some old business from the last meeting in regard to the use of the American Rescue Plan funds. I want to speak on behalf of the diversity coordinators' work in our district, and specifically in response to some of the information that's been presented recently through the Love Not Fear Project, which is building a case against the teaching of critical race theory. In some of the materials put out by this organization, in reference to the Sherman Alexey book that was taught in eighth grade English this year, this book is being referred to as a banned book. According to the American Library Association, a banned book is one that has been removed from the shelf of a library or school. This book not only remained on the shelves in our school, but it remained in the hands of all students who wanted to read it. So to continue to refer to the book as banned is to spread false information. The Love Not Fear Project is also using a slide from Dr. Yolanda Seeley Ruiz's presentation to students during the high school's Racial Equity Day as an example of how critical race theory harms our children. The slide shows the Pyramid of White Supremacy, a graphic created to illustrate how individuals can remove the foundation for hate by paying attention to small, everyday acts of empowerment. In other words, it is a tool created for positive teaching. I looked at the same slide when I attended Dr. Seeley Ruiz's presentation to our community in May, where I also learned that the foundation of her work is something she refers to as "critical love," a philosophy of relationship building and creating a culture where students know they are loved and cared for. Because without love for our students and the teachers who support them, change will not occur. To use that slide out of context...
Your time is up.
Thank you, I'll wrap up. To use that slide out of context is to use fear as a weapon against love. I've seen the success of Racial Equity Day in our high schools spread to the middle school and to Hillside, where the date of their event was June 11, which is Loving Day. I'm going to end by saying that if you're paying attention to what's really happening in our schools and the work of Dr. Mateo Toledo, you'll see that it is truly motivated by love, not fear, and love and joy are all over the work that she is doing. Thank you so much.
I don't see any additional public comment. Are there any comments from the Board of Education? Are there any comments from the Board of Education?
I'd like to go first because I've served the least, so I'll save the best for last. But it's probably very unprecedented having three strong and experienced board members leave us all at once. So I think it's quite obvious that we were lucky for your service. Thirteen years, three years, president's service. Thank you guys all. It's been a fun experience. It's been a tough year to learn. They say your first year, you're supposed to stay low. I don't do that well, but I do listen more than it looks like. So you will be missed. I wish Andrea Stewart-Cousins was still here because as I've said to Lauren before, I loved voting for you the first time when you didn't win and the second time when you did. And if anybody wants to see a really interesting history, our majority leader had a ridiculously difficult first election when she jumped from our county to our state senator. And Lauren did not have as difficult a run, but thank you for running twice and serving your way. And Jeremy, I'll see you at the Jets. And Jody, I'll see you on the streets. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I just want to add one little comment that I apologize to Patrick Theodoul that I didn't give you a shout out. When I was thinking about the people who were here who've been through it with me for the duration and you've certainly been there all the time and into the wee hours of the night sometimes and even loaning your sweet Damon to be a rec basketball referee and player. So it's been wonderful also. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say just a couple of words. I'll start with Jeremy and Lauren. First, Lauren, thank you for your service for three years and being a president during this year, which was brutal, let's be honest.
Ridiculous is another word.
Yeah, we're just ridiculous. And, you know, I think before you get on the board, you've got an idea of what you're supposed to do and then you realize, you know, those three balls turn into 72 and you're not sure which ones to catch and which ones to let drop. But I think you've really stayed through, obviously, a very difficult year on many levels, stayed focused and really deeply appreciate that. I think what stands out most to me is your commitment to kids. And I think you always brought a lens, obviously, much deeper and, you know, grounded in your experience and your training that I think was a really important voice for this board. And I hope you can share that voice in ways, even though you won't officially be on the board. And Jeremy, thank you for stepping up. I think when I first asked you, do you want to run? He just, two days later, said, yeah, sure, why not? I don't think he really thought about it at all. And, you know, that was the end of that. And he just kind of jumped on the board and, you know, brought us to most meetings and always had, I just think, kind of a nice, just relaxed energy about the whole thing, like, eh, maybe we shouldn't get so worked up about this stuff, which in many ways is probably one of the better ways to approach board service. So thank you for your three years. And Jody, our historian here, we're losing our link to history and the past and I think perspective, really. So hopefully you'll be around, continue to be around, but I'm sure I won't be able to tap into your knowledge as well. But, you know, I'm somehow the elder statesman on the board now. I don't know how that happened so quick. You guys all served, what, like a decade? And then all of a sudden, we've got this rapid turnaround. But you were always so thoughtful in all of your comments. And you always really tried to take everyone's perspective into account. I think you embodied really what great board service is from that perspective, that it's really about trying to see things from everyone's perspective. And then you have to make a decision and you can't always take everyone's perspective as the lead perspective. But certainly as the data, I think you exemplified that. And in many ways, you kind of trained a lot of other people on the board to embody that. So thank you and for the million other things that I can't go through now, but thank you for everything you've done. Deeply appreciate it.
I just wanted to say this was a lovely meeting. I really enjoyed hearing various people speak about those who are retiring. And I felt like they looked deeply to find the right words and to acknowledge where those people have really dug deep to work for children in our district. So that was a really moving part of today. I loved it. And I'm sorry I didn't speak to Sofia when she was here. But, you know, one of my favorite parts in our committees is being on the board student union committee and just hearing directly from them. I'm just always sitting in there grinning like an idiot. But I just like to hear it from them sometimes and their perspective and what's on their minds. And as you mentioned to her directly, I appreciated that she brought in real news for us and did it very articulately in front of lots of people often. So thank her for that. And to our board, the main thing I'm really going to miss is that each of you thinks about things in different ways. And I appreciated how many times I recognized, I didn't think about that. And you brought up that new perspective. And even though we come from all different backgrounds and jobs and you really were, everybody was turning these issues over and forcing the rest of us to think and to justify why you supported something or why you didn't and what the next step might be. And I'm definitely going to miss the three of you and your input for that because it made a very big difference to me and helping me feel settled in my own thinking, like I had thought from many different angles that I wouldn't have generated on my own. So thank you for your extended time on the board and to both of you for all the hours you put in.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to say a few brief things so you guys can go home. For Jeremy, thank you for always getting down to business, cutting to the heart of the matter and keeping us on task. You are an efficient board member. What are we actually talking about? And you get us there. Thank you. For Jody, you've served as the heart of the board. You really have always been driven, as Doug said, to make sure that all perspectives are heard and respected. But you always do that steeped in a place of mutually hearing people out so that people feel like they're heard with authenticity. And I thank you for teaching me that and not to take things personally, especially when there's a lot of sharp elbows being thrown around. Thank you. And for Lauren, I don't think I could say, you know, I think I'm just going to say briefly, you are prepared, you are composed, and you set an exceptionally high standard for the consummate professional. And you give it more than 100% every single time. But what I want to say to members of the public is that what unites the three of these people is integrity, hard work, and being focused on the best interest of the district, never a personal agenda. I respect them and I thank them for what they have taught me in my short two years here by their example. In essence, we are public servants and we've been very lucky to have such exceptional people be in service at an exceptionally turbulent time. So thank you to all three of you guys. We're going to be so much the worse about you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, first personally, just thank you to everyone who has said very meaningful words tonight to all of us. Words that you've said to me, I really try to listen and really take it to heart. And I want to say thank you to Valerie for, I didn't say it earlier, but for all of your heart and soul that you've put into this district over the past couple of years. I've said it before and you know, this is not, who could have even ever imagined, for any of us, but I think as a superintendent, I can only imagine that you one often thinks about or imagines sort of worst-case scenarios and.
We've covered them all.
Ain't that the truth? I mean, this is just unprecedented. And you have just, I know that you and Melissa and Maureen have put in probably more than 24 hours a day on many occasions. I think we are, we know that on the board and really appreciate it. But I really much, I was thinking about this night when you said, Allison, about the evening, that there's something incredibly powerful about this moment when we could, so much of this evening was personal, really. And we could go from the contrast of, or in the same moment, I'd say, of honoring and recognizing a superintendent who's retiring to honoring and recognizing several custodians who are retiring, all of whom have had careers that they are proud of. And there's something incredibly moving about that in terms of valuing people for who they are and their roles and that whether you're the superintendent or you're the custodian and everything in between, you know, we couldn't exist without all of the pieces. And so there's something very moving about this evening, having all of that there. But I really want to thank you and I want to thank everybody on the board. I think you have been just incredible teammates. You have been incredible team players. And I say that from the bottom of my heart. You know, I worked on a board for probably five years of people who were probably the most impressive group that I have ever been a part of in terms of how a group process worked. But I have to say that you all have really stepped up with everyone's, as you said, varying perspectives, professions, personal opinions. But the kind of respect and honesty that has kind of come together and to see everybody, we're here now, but for so many meetings on the screen, just looking at your voices and everybody being really digging down deep around difficult things that we've had to do and to talk about and decisions to make. You've been a really impressive group. And I really know that for the four of you, you really, I have this image of a wagon and the four of you are sort of the wheels that are going to move the district along. The new people, you kind of got to go along for the ride a little bit until you sort of get some wheels too. You don't have to, but I would think that might be the best way to start the ride. But I just feel very comfortable knowing that you're kind of going to be moving things forward. And I have incredible belief and faith and trust in you and always around for whatever questions or complaining you want to do.
Thanks. I just want to say a couple of things real quickly. Jody, 13 years is unbelievable. It really is. I mean, the amount of stuff that you do for the district with basketball is incredible. And I was only on for one term, so I kind of feel silly. I got out of it easy. I didn't even, I wasn't a president or a vice president.
You're going to have to run again.
Decided not to run again. When Lauren and I got elected a week later, Tony decided that he wasn't going to stay in the district. And some people say, well, maybe you didn't know what you were getting into. I had a good sense, but it was definitely a crazy three years. But I want to also thank Sylvia and Lauren because you guys knew what you were getting into this year, you know. And thanks to Doug for being president for two difficult years. But you guys knew that this was a COVID year and you guys stepped up and decided to be president and vice president. And I know how much time that is. And I was true to myself that I didn't have that time to put into that role. But I really, really respect the fact that you guys stepped up, especially this year. For anyone who steps up any year, but you guys knew exactly what you were getting into this year. And I really appreciate you guys taking the lead for us.
Couple hours a month, right?
Two hours a month, two hours.
The old couple hours a month. It's just a couple hours a month. I didn't say, Valerie, thank you to you. And I did want to say that before the meeting ends. You know, I don't think you can imagine as, obviously, as many polarizing issues that you got thrown into the middle of.
A few.
Yeah, they were, you know, I think they were, you know, it was like, choose one, lose. You lose this way, you lose this way. Which one do you want? I mean, it was like that kept happening. And you said, okay, I'll lose this way. And then you just, you know, you stuck with it with a work ethic and an attitude that, you know, a lot of people agree with and a lot of people didn't. And that was just the nature of the job this year in more, I think, in a deeper way than anyone could have ever. So thank you for the effort and the grace that you showed in handling that. Thank you.
Valerie, I just want to say to you one more thing, which is it's very easy for us to sort of think about the pandemic and how difficult that's been. It's a lot harder to think about, to put ourselves in your shoes and think about what it must be like to be a black female superintendent. And even in a town like Hastings that is supposed to be so warm and welcoming. I can only begin to imagine all that comes with that and that you've done it before you were here. And you know what comes to some degree with the territory. But it's, you do it with such grace. And I really very much appreciate that. I have this image in my head right now of, you know, the picture of the Kamala Harris picture with the little girl. I guess it's Ruby Bridges.
Ruby.
Right? Walking. And my granddaughter has that in her room above her changing table. It's just like, but I use your Ruby Bridges quote that you have under your signature. And I thank you for all that you have brought to our district in the area of pushing us to think daily and be uncomfortable about the issues that we all need to be thinking about daily and be uncomfortable about.
Can I just say a word or two?
Of course.
I'd like to thank the board for your dedication. It hasn't been easy. And none of us signed up for what took place. But because of all of you, Maureen and Melissa, Melissa, Fee, Lynn, Joe, everyone, all the administrators, we're here without a pass. So nothing else matters. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night, everyone.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Jody, Jeremy, Lauren, Valerie.
We have a pile of things to sign. Somebody, the party people.